I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Grace, can we not wait on you?
You're waiting long enough, Judy.
This session of the Lincoln County Commission on February 3, 2011, 6:00 PM is now called to order. Members present, Donald C. Witten Clark, Charles McCann, President, Thomas Brady, Commissioner. First thing on the agenda, I need a motion to bring them into the regular session of the Lincoln County Commission that was held on January 20, 2011, until noon.
Second, in all that, so the motion carries.
Next thing on the agenda is the Small Cities Block Grant Project. We just had a public hearing. We have Jim Bowles from Region 2 planning development.
I couldn't see you. I found that podium. I thought, well, he's there.
Yeah, yeah. I'm stealthy. Judy mentioned we just had the public hearing, which of course, again, we do that under the participation requirements in the Small Cities Program. Of course, you all had two, any time we do a new application, we're required to have two public hearings. However, this year is a resubmission, so you're only required to do one public hearing and advertise that five days prior to the public hearing itself. From the public hearing process, you all determined that you wanted to submit a Small Cities Application for the Big Hearts Water Project. And I just gave a summary of that during the public hearing, but for the benefit of those who weren't here for that, I'll give you a quick summary of what you're proposing to submit to the Development Office. This is an application. I inherently had mentioned to Sean that it was 170 customers. Actually, I'm just looking at my numbers and they're backwards. 710 customers. I would say, well, I got to think it's $17 million for 170. Not a good rate, but it's 710 customers in the Lincoln and Logan County communities of Big Hearts Creek, Buckford, Smokehouse Fork, Shively, White Oak Branch, Browns Run, Thompson Branch, Rock House Fork, Big Trace Fork, Cougar Fork, and surrounding areas. Total project cost itself is, again, $17,176,000. And the funding on that is proposed to be a $1.5 million Small Cities Block Grant, and the balance of funds being USDA grant and loan, and $100,000 contribution from both the Lincoln County Commission and the Logan County Commission. Project itself consists of the construction of approximately 255,700 linear feet of 8-inch smaller diameter water line, 2 200 gallon per minute booster stations, 2 270 gallon water storage tanks, 240 fire hydrants, valves, individual customer meters and related purchases. And I'll mention that the other activities included as part of this proposal, and that's for the use of Small Cities Funds, will be grant administration, engineering, land acquisition permits, legal and accounting. And of course, under the Small Cities Block Grant, we did have to qualify that under one of the three national objectives, and of course, we did that as benefit of persons below to moderate income. And this project did qualify with a low-mob percentage of 56.53%. With that, I do have a couple of resolutions that I'd like to present to you all. And these are actually in the application itself, so I'll ask you to do those first, so that you can just adopt those as part of the application. The first resolution I have is a resolution adopting the Lincoln County Community Development and Housing Needs Assessment Summary. And it says, "Whereas the County Commission of Lincoln County finds it necessary and desirable to adopt the Lincoln County Community Development Housing Needs Assessment Summary, now therefore be it resolved, the County Commission of Lincoln County does hereby authorize the President of Lincoln County Commission to adopt the attached Community Development Housing Needs Assessment Summary," and has been, well, a motion in second, but I'll present that to you all for your all's approval.
You have a motion to adopt. That's presented, Mr. ... Motion I'll second. Oh, yes. Motion carries.
I think another important part of this water line is a twin advice network working with Logan PSD. It's going to bring water to an elementary school that currently doesn't have public water. And I know that area's had some problems, even at the school. So it's not a Lincoln County elementary school, but it's still a school where elementary kids are impacted.
Yeah, I would say this is one of the rare applications that we get to do where two counties are involved. That's the only resolution I have. We were also going to do a fair housing resolution, but you all, of course, do that annually. Since you all are the current recipient or the current holder of a Small Cities Block Grant, so you all just did one of those last years, so it's still current and valid. The other resolution I have is actual resolutions authorizing submission of a Small Cities Block Grant Application. And it says, "Whereas Lincoln County Commission, Lincoln County does hereby find it necessary and desirable to seek funding for the Big Hearts Water Project, and whereas financial assistance from the West Virginia Development Office Small Cities Block Grant program is necessary to carry out this project, therefore be it resolved, Lincoln County Commission authorizes the President of Lincoln County Commission to sign and submit an application to the West Virginia Development Office Small Cities Block Grant Program, including all understandings and assurances therein, and further direct said person to act as official representative of the Lincoln County Commission for the provision of any additional information as may be required to request to adopt this on the third day of February 2011."
Second. In all that, so the motion carries.
Man, with that, Richard McCann, you get everything else. I'm not going to find a clip on here, so it'll be a little lengthy to flip through. But you'll notice I have pegs on either side.
I'm about to drop it on the earth.
Ow! Oh, I don't see. I already got copies made at the office. I can just go through those.
If you don't get cold in here tonight, don't think we're not paying our bill.
The Indians are active, huh?
We actually got construction going on there. I don't know if it's system nor to work.
Real quick, like we mentioned in the public hearing, Will Smith, this has to be in by March 22nd, and then we'll begin that review process. And like I said, last year was September before they made the announcements for last year's allocations. And generally, if they do that September, they'll send up a state local contract in October. Hopefully, by this time next year, we'll already done all the upfront documentation. We'll be in the environmental process. It would be nice if you put those signature places on the same side of the paper.
Now, you know better.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I like to put those in pretty green binders when I'm bringing them. And that's, yeah, that was already signed. And I would love to check to make sure everything's signed. And if I happen to walk back up here for some reason, you'll know when I'm wandering around. All right. And of course, like I say, Will Smith, that's well before that 22nd deadline. We generally will hold on to this for just a little while while they review, go through the review process. That would certainly have to be any changes or anything like made or anything like that. What you all get back is an actual executed copy with all the corrections made in it.
But a proposal like this, we do need to bring this to the attention of our governor.
Yes. The governor is the one who makes ultimate decisions with the Small Cities Grants. So if you can put a bug in his ear, the decision's pending and Serge folks and...
Sometime after March.
Yes. Yeah. Anything before 22nd probably a little premature, but after that. So always important to let the governor know that it's there. That way, he can talk with the Development Office and let them know that he's aware that he's undergoing the review process. All right. That's all I have. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Go back and see us.
Sure will.
Next thing on the agenda we have here from you all, I'd like to talk to the commissioners concerning the import taxes.
I live in a trailer.
How are you? Oh, yeah.
I live in a trailer up on 235 Long Branch Road. And I got divorced in the year 2000, and I got a lot of papers. I lived in that trailer from 2000 to 2008. And I never did have to pay no taxes on that trailer because it was not in my name, but it belonged to my ex-wife, who was small on the debt. And I have papers that she gave me from the bank, the Community Trust Bank, where they have a loan or whatever. And it states in there that they bought the trailer for my, her son, Alvin. And when I called to see how much my taxes was, I had to relate with taxes from 2008, 2009.
2006, 7, 8, and 9.
Okay, I got receipts for 6, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 9, but I don't have 7, 8 on the record. Which I went in at the Capital County Department. They said 2008. I also have a receipt where I moved in to Capital County.
Who's that?
That's when I got housing authority. That's the day that I moved in to my house. It's November 1st, 2008. There's a lot of papers. It doesn't say anything about him giving me a home to live in, but I did have custody of kids, so I just looked them up. Yeah, my first time. Here's some checks or something that Rachel gave me or the bank. This is from Mike Banks. I rented his lot for a hundred dollars a month. He didn't remember when I moved in, but he did. It was on there the, when I moved out of that trailer.
So what are you asking us to do?
There was the, what were the papers for like 334 on the trailer?
And when was this?
Janet Limble came over from the Sheriff's Department and stated that Debbie Watts was wanting to get her license for 2010. And she had 2006, 7, 8, and 9 with delinquent taxes, and she would have to pay those prior to getting her license, which Debbie had called me and was talking to me, and she said she didn't know these taxes, and that she was wanting the County Commission to excuse these taxes because they were not owed by her and let her get her, pay her 2010 taxes so that she could get her driver's license, her tag that goes on her car. And I told her that she would have to come before the County Commission before we could do this. But did she have any documentation stating that she was not responsible for these taxes? And then that's when she stated that she had been divorced from Alvin Watts and that she didn't own the trailer, and she felt that she didn't have to pay them. So I went to the assessor's office and asked them, well, you know, how did you all get these, this name? And they said that the appraisers was out there at her trailer and that the landlord had stated that Debbie Watts lives in that trailer, and that's how they put it on there because it was never on record.
But what I'm saying is, the trailer was never mine. I was never on no lease. I didn't know how much that my payments was. I don't know where I even got a trailer. Because we was going through a divorce, and people were like, give me a trailer for me and my first living in. That was it. I only paid a hundred dollars a month.
Somebody owes taxes on this, don't you?
No, I just, I mean, I lived it. I was never on no deed, nothing. I mean, you could tell right there, well, they went through the bank. I was not on anything. And it shocked me when she was telling that. I'm like, you know, I mean, I was...
Well, we gotta give somebody a thing.
I know that, but I don't see...
Well, is your bank's...
The word I'm saying is, I don't see how I would be responsible for paying it if I didn't purchase the trailer. That's the Community Trust Bank and Alvin and Rachel Watts. That's all I know.
Is there anything in here that states that they, that the banks were supposed to pay your taxes or anything?
I don't know. I didn't have time to read that. I just picked that up from her. And she said she blocked out the black because she didn't want to have a social...
Then I can understand.
So when you moved out on November 2008, where did you move?
To Capital County. See, I owe taxes in Capital County. It's not never getting light. I'm willing to pay the Lincoln taxes on the card. Just, and I'm saying, I had, I guess it was on the card.
So you haven't lived in Lincoln County since 2008 or November?
And they sold the trailer to a, a new McComas.
And Robert McComas came in and paid the 2010 taxes.
But then I was told that they put the title, my son's, was 15 at the time, they put the title in his name. And he bought the title, I mean, he bought the trailer off him for $10.00. They sold the trailer, and that's all. And I paid no money on the trailer. Didn't know anything about it until recently. We're gonna be asked questions. She finally told me. Then I asked her about the, that bank paper, and she said that she would look it up. All right.
Think you're still living in Capital County? And tell me, I just probably missed something there. And you were back out here wanting a lot?
Did not pay the $334 on that trailer. I mean, I'm willing to pay the...
Where did that show up at?
I don't know. It's just what they told me.
But why did you come to this office? Was you trying to get a license renewed or...?
No. I, I, they told me I had, I called to see where I had, because I didn't know how you have to, they said when you move into a county, you gotta get assessed or something. I didn't know that. I really didn't know that. So when I went, when I called over here to see where do I go to pay my taxes? Because I got a little tag from my card, you know, the little card to get them out. And when I called, she's like, it was $334 to Janet Limble. And I said, for what? She said, for a $19.90 of a trailer. Said I never get on a trailer. That was my argument with her. I didn't, I never owned a trailer. But I'm willing to pay the taxes if I owe them from my card to get my, you know, the little sticker, whatever. But I didn't know anything about the trailer.
I'm still confused. Why are you out here wanting a car license when you live in Capital County?
Well, I don't. I'm just, the reason I'm here, because I was told to come here to get clear of those taxes to let them know I don't owe the $334 for the trailer. They won't let me have them.
In Capital County?
Yeah.
It showed up down there. It was outstanding. Now I understand.
That's why I'm here. Because I've got the money to get my, pay the taxes that I owe to the arson, but I'm just... The only thing she gave me was the, the, well, they had it through the Community Trust Bank.
So where is the trailer at?
It's still accessible to 35 Long Branch Road.
Sold to somebody else.
And to Mike Banks, he still collects the lottery from them also.
And what does the law say we can do in Kansas?
You all can wave it.
I'm talking to you.
Oh, okay. I thought you saw me, Charles.
Kind of our mission has a last study on, you know, my bank's tax.
Well, like I said, I said it in jest, but somebody owes taxes, but don't believe it's her.
Which you can exonerate her taxes by stating that she did not own it. And then they could go and buy tax, like the Alvin.
Has the assessor had any input into this? Is he aware of this? What's his opinion on
I've just been dealing with the sheriff's office. Other than going down and asking how they fit that trailer in her nose. And she stated that she had never ever owned it. She had never been assessed or anything. And they stated that the appraisers had asked the landlord who owned that trailer. And that the landlord was Debbie Watts, and that's how they could have it occur not.
Well, I don't have a problem. I think it needs to be exonerated, but I think maybe it should be with the understanding it's in agreement with the assessment. So I entertain a motion to relieve Deborah Watts of the taxes by binding the assessors in agreement. I'll make that motion second. And we all, yes, vote. Motion carries. And so tomorrow, well, excuse me, it's not working tomorrow.
It'll be late tomorrow afternoon, and I'll be back.
I would still need my license, but I was just wondering what I do vote. You know, me like for the car. She says I'm about to go and make...
Well, that's where you will have to come into the assessor's office, be assessed at the assessor's office, then go to the sheriff's office and pay. What time can you be up here tomorrow? Do you have to work tomorrow?
I could probably leave at 2:00 if I get some recovery. I work for...
It'll be in the afternoon.
Yes, I'll be here then. Why don't you come up to the courthouse at that time and come to the commission's office? My office is right there. And we'll go down to the assessor's office, and hopefully by that time, I can talk to the assessor and have them to do an exoneration. And then we'll buy tax Alvin Watts the second, correct? Because he was the one who owned that trailer.
Well, his mom and dad. I don't think he's on there. I mean, I'm just saying. I would take that for him, but I don't think he's on there.
I didn't see his name. I think his mom and dad's currently involved.
And then we'll get a ticket.
Then he'll levy the taxes on the VHS.
Right. Right.
Well...
Then I'll see about, if we're around 3:00, 3:30?
Yeah, something like that.
Thank you. Thanks for the guy.
Yep.
Be free to go. Have a good evening. Next thing on the agenda is written down.
Welcome, Rick.
Thank you.
I'm not even starting saying which project this is about.
I'm not sure which project. I'll talk about it.
You get things worked out with speed reception there. Thought that was a good idea.
I think it's a good idea too. If it wasn't, excuse me, no. I don't think we're going to go over something yet. Four.
It would be quick.
We have several irons in fire at this point. Phase three, which is the one we're trying to get into play and get the money for. The bid calendar is here today. We had the required pre-bid site visit. And what that means is that if you wanted to bid on the project, you had to show up. So people, we have four different firms that were present, and we met at 9:00. And we talked for a while, and then wandered around in the watershed for the rest of the day till about 5:30. And the idea was that those people who wanted to bid could look at each one of the homes, understand what they were bidding on, and then also, as a group, we came up with some addendums to the original bid, because we found some homes where we really needed to do some different electrical work. There were a couple where they really needed plumbing that we didn't think they do, and some other minor kind of changes. Those have to be approved by DEP. We had some DEP people earlier today, so I don't think it's going to hold the process up. The bids are due at 10:00. This comes Wednesday. The ninth, and at 1:00, the bid committee will open them. It's a two-bid process. The first envelope, you get all these required kind of things. If somebody does not have all the required things, we won't open the second. If they do, we'll open the second. The second has the bid. We're supposed to give it to the lowest bidder. There were some people there today that we'd never work with, and we really didn't know. So my guess is, if they're the low bidders, the bid committee's going to say, we've got to find some stuff out of this before we award the bid to them. What we would do then, if the bid committee was satisfied, we'd bring to Charles a recommendation. Last meeting, you guys approved the fact that he could act in their stead. Once he approves it, we draw up the final budget, submit it to DEP. They'd approve it, and then they'd send all the paperwork. So that's, Judy, you're skipping pages. We're not on page, we're not on page three yet. Okay. There's too much exciting stuff happening.
No, that was...
She's reading ahead.
She said if you gave her, gave her any assignments.
Oh, no. So that's, that's where, that's where we are with phase three. We're pretty well finished up with page two. Yesterday, we submitted a final requisition to draw down money. I think that's going to be the final thing. There is some money unspent. The DEP is still trying to decide what we should do with that, whether we should submit another addendum and use it for money for phase three, and try to spend phase two money on the phase three, or whether they'll just roll it over without us doing an addendum. I don't think they've figured it out with their...
But we will get keep the money somewhere, you said.
It'll get used somehow for Lincoln County.
Yeah.
So I don't think that's going to be a problem. What you got on the second page is the jobs report that takes us through the end of January. These are jobs that are specifically funded through the ARRA project. You'll see that through the end of January, we had 198 hours. The people had worked on the project and almost $5,000 worth. Four people, four jobs created, three sustained, all in the county. There'll be some additional hours and money for trouble, but not very much, because we're trying to wind this thing down. So that's the wastewater project. On the third page, the exciting page, has to do with the heating and cooling project. And where are we with that? When we originally talked about the project, we knew that there was a $200,000 grant for the project. Judy and I worked together. We brought in a guy from Casto who had worked before. And Casto has the current contract to take care of our heating and cooling system. So he worked with us. We went through the building. We tried to figure out what was needed. At that point, he said it might cost as much as $248,300. So the commission said, okay, we will budget, if needed, an additional $48,000 plus dollars. We went ahead and bid the project out. It looked at one point like there were going to be two firms. In the end, there was only one firm, and Casto was that firm. Their bid was $225,000. The bid was awarded to Casto for that amount. Casto then sublet all that we're hearing now to Tri-State Roofing and Sheet Metal. And they're the people who are crawling around in these ducks and putting these new things that you've seen into the system. Toward the end of January, the folks at Casto contacted us and said, ooh, there's a $7,000 overrun that's happening with this. They didn't contact us to say, we think there's going to be a $7,000 overrun. They contacted us and said, there already is a $7,000 overrun. So we said, what? We need to know a little more about this. We had a meeting Monday or Tuesday sometime this week with a guy from Casto and a guy from Tri-State Roofing. It was our suggestion that they get all their ducks in a row and figure out what the total cost of the overrun might be. Yesterday, Casto sent us what they said the final total was going to be. It was, by that point, it had doubled. So it's now just, it's $14,600. When we got that, we, we were of many different minds. One was, you guys bid this thing out, you know? You're supposed to come and look at everything. Plus, you're the people who service this. You ought to know what's there. They said, well, you know, we might have known, but the people we sublet this to Tri-State didn't know. And Tri-State's doing more. What Tri-State says is, there are a couple different problems that they've encountered. One is that, I don't know what they call it, crawl space, the difference between the ceiling and the floor on the second floor is different than the first floor. And when they crawled around on the second floor, there was a whole lot more room. When they got to the first floor, there was a whole lot less room. The other problem, they say, is these kind of diffusers? Is that a piece of something? Thank you. I'm Judy's assistant. She knows more of this than I do.
I think you'll probably learn in the end.
We are. Well, these things are supposed to fit in between these metal pieces that hold the ceiling up. Well, they're correctly installed here, but if you go into some room, what you'll find is the diffusers are in between these things. The thought is probably when a new ceiling went in, and having to put the new ceiling in, that was the only way they could get the ceiling in there was to move everything, so they fit that way. Well, there's a problem, because when you go up there and you start taking them out, because the ceilings changed, everything's all messed up in there. In some places, the diffusers are what are actually holding up the ceiling. So there seem to be a number of different issues. So after understanding that, we went back to Casto, who are the people we made the bid with. with. We haven't made any bids with Tri-State. We've only been working with Casto. And we said, friends, this is a big overrun. You made the bid. You should have checked, even though the county commission at one point said, sure, we put in forty-eight thousand dollars. Once we got the bid for only twenty-five thousand dollars more, we put that money into other stuff that's not here anymore.
And we started smiling.
And we started smiling. Well, they're smiling now. And we suggested to them that before we take any actions, we need to know what Casto will absorb in this overrun. So Casto has emailed us to say they could absorb a thousand dollars.
We can too. I'll agree with that.
So that's where we are now. I think Judy and I are both extremely disappointed in Casto that that's all they're willing to absorb.
And if they would have said fifty percent.
That's what we were hoping.
They were way behind.
They had been way behind on what they said they were going to do. Now, they say that they've been behind because they didn't know it was going to take them so long to get the pieces and I don't know, but yes, they're behind.
In their contract, it stated that they would be completed by January thirty-first.
Are they?
Well, now, Mike Webb told me that the original contract, not their contract, but with the Energy Efficiency Agreement, that gives them five months from the date of eighteen.
When it's signed.
Right. And he said that would be the end of February.
So they're not officially late yet. And the guys who are out there working now, you know, I mean, they're the grunts. They might not really know what's happening, but they have made a lot of improvements and they have a much better detailed plan that says, well, give us, that show us all these things and we've got. But they're close, but, and Casto has said, one of our questions to Casto was, okay, are you going to come to us in two more weeks and say, oops, it was fourteen thousand dollars at the beginning of February, but now it's?
Thirty-six thousand.
Forty-eight.
I think they know exactly about whether how much it was and how much we're trying to get.
I don't know quite as blunt as Judy did. So, I mean, I guess we wanted to, one way to look at it is that we've got this cost overrun and they shouldn't be doing any more work until we decide what to do about the cost overrun. Are we going to absorb it?
I say let them fix it. Then we'll worry about the cost overrun.
Does Casto agree that fourteen thousand plus is the ceiling of what it's?
That's what, well, they agree that it's going to be two-twenty-five, but as of yesterday, they said yes. That was a specific question I asked in the email. Is this it? Is there going to be any more? And is Casto going to come up with an overrun? All this overrun is for Tri-State Roofing.
They don't have a contract or any agreement with Tri-State. Our agreement is with Casto, so.
Exactly.
And I said to Chuck Ray, I said, now Chuck, don't you always, when you put a bid together, do you always have a little bit of leeway? And he said, always. But this one here, he said, I bid it pretty tight, but we've got some leeway. So I thought for sure he's going to come back and say at least fifty percent, but a thousand dollars?
It's almost a slap in the face.
Well, and we talked to Jeff Graham up there and he told me you could give to Chuck Ray.
And we talked to, on Monday, I guess it was, Jeff or, our face was to Casto anyway.
Well, and Jeff was the, I mean, he was really the instrumental person in helping us design the renovation.
So, I mean, I just think right now, take no action, but we can move forward. We've got to get the project finished and then we'll worry about the bid.
What should I, what would you like me to email back to the ETS? Call us when you're ready.
Tell them that you have brought submission and we've awarded a contract and they need to finish the job as the contract was awarded. And when they're finished, we can have some dialogue.
Have they been paid anything yet?
No.
They did send an invoice in for thirty-one percent being completed of seventy-seven thousand dollars. And I gave that invoice to Mike Webb on Tuesday. But Mike said that the invoice was not complete, that they were supposed to attach the payroll sheets with it and he had not received it. Do you know, Jim, have they sent in their payroll sheets?
I don't think they have yet. He spoke with, he spoke with a person in their office about that and she's supposed to be getting that to him. But yet he can't submit anything until the payroll sheets are attached, which has to be submitted with us.
Mike's prevailing wage.
Right. They have to, they have to, Casto has to show that they're paying prevailing wage. So each week, we've got to do that with the, Graham, each week you're supposed to have the contractor give you the sheets for that week that shows how much people are paid, at what rate, and then you've got to check it against the actual payment.
And they were supposed to send in the first ones after they were on site for two weeks? I think it's what Mike was telling me.
After two weeks and then we usually ask them to send them weekly there after.
And they've been here four weeks and they've never sent any of the payroll sheets in.
Disgusting.
Did Casto subcontract the whole thing or just the sheet metal component?
I think it's just the sheet.
Yeah, so they still have some people working here today.
Okay.
And Mike and I discussed it in our office and I said, you know, you've always got a performance monitoring to go back on.
Excuse me?
A performance monitoring, but they posted.
Okay. I will let him know that the commission wants him to finish the job.
And you make sure Mike knows that.
Oh, he knows.
Yes, he was sent in on a meeting with Chuck Ray. And we also had a representative there from Tri-State, but it wasn't the main man.
And that representative was in the back when I was trying to make copies and he corralled me to talk about it.
Mike and I talked about that performance monitoring that may be a bit mature, but I mean, if they go much beyond their completion date, I mean, what would they have done? Mike started getting in.
And said, we don't need to do anything to them in February, the time they're exhausted all their work time.
And then Monday, I hope nobody comes here to do any business on Monday. They're going to have the heat completely turned off again because they're going to be installing a new coil instead of the heat will be off on that. Pray for warm weather. Keep employees away from the corridor. Don't you make good thoughts on Monday, that's all of that.
It's supposed to be done before winter, say. That's how we started way back there.
And then once, once everything is completed, we'd like to sit down with them.
With our prosecutor and.
It's amazing. All right, thank you. And by the next meeting, we should, we can't run out of this resolve, but we won't waste any stuff.
Well, we appreciate you being out there on the front line.
Thanks.
They don't shoot your hand.
Next thing on the agenda is the Harts Gardens and Community Center and the McCorkle Community Center.
Let's talk about the McCorkle Center, those kinds of McCorkle people here. Are you chairman or Mr. President? I can't remember which.
President, I suppose.
Scott.
I don't have a lot of talk to talk about. The board met with the Crime Watch on the twenty-first and you all know that the Crime Watch occupied some room in the building and we just wanted to get together and get on the same page with that. Here's the minutes from Ms. Sharp.
Hi, Ms. Sharp.
I think in the past, the Crime Watch have been treated, well, not very good with the places they've been in and things. I believe some of them were worried that since you all appointed a board of directors and were starting in the community center, that they were going to be pushed out. And we assured them that that's not the case. We tried to let them know that we want them to be a part of that community center. They do great community activity. They keep us safe and they keep a watch for us and we told them that we do appreciate that. And we wanted to let them know that they're welcome to use the facilities as they have been. They have a meeting once a month, a scheduled meeting, but then they have other activities that they do throughout the month. And we wanted them to know that they are going to be able to use that room as long as we can say yes to it. And we don't expect them to pay a fee for it as other renters might, for the simple fact that they are a community act, they're a community committee or a community group and that's where we are, a community center. We talked about getting some sort of contract together for them that would reflect what was expected out of them and expected out of us and things like that. The only thing we asked, we asked them for a key to their room for emergency purposes that wouldn't be given to anybody else. The board would keep that key, probably me, and we would only enter their room if necessity, a necessity would arise. We discussed a little bit about, this was, this wasn't really aimed toward the Crime Watch, but political activities in the building and I don't know if there had been some requests for some future candidates or something to come to the community building there, but that was something that was just brought up during that time. We also felt that actually some of the volunteers of the Crime Watch helped a lot at the community center now and we had discussed with some of them if they'd like to, if they'd like to help more. And so that's, that was really encouraging. And we're all, the board, the vice president knows a lot of folks already in the area and I'm relearning people and I'm meeting new people. And there's a lot of people involved in the McCorkle Community Center, a lot of volunteers, people that do it for free, that come out there just to help the community. And LeAnn has, has got all kinds of, I don't think we have very many days left on our calendar we can do anything. She's got so much in her mind and it's great. We're rolling along really well with the Crime Watch being there. As far as I'm concerned, that's already a community outreach type of thing. We spoke with LCOC, Alice Tomlin, and she's really interested in doing more there. You all approved five thousand dollars for them a couple of meetings ago and she told me that will buy around six-hundred-and-twenty-five meals for the people in the community. And as you know, we do meals three days a week, Wednesday through Friday. And we would like to someday get back up to five days a week. And I talked to Ms. Tomlin about, she brought it up, possibly getting a coordinator from LCOC in the building, five days a week. And, you know, when funds become available, maybe that's something we can explore and then we would have somebody there five days a week and possibly get those meals going five days a week. And she was interested in that. They're going to get an estimate on what it would cost to have that done and then I'll go from there. Dwight Coburn of the Southwestern Action Council expressed his thoughts about the place and he told me he'd love to see it become a full-fledged senior center like we have in Harts and I think West Hamlin's in Hamlin's and I think there's three of them. And he would do what he can through his office to help us with that. I think we've got a lot of interest from the folks who are already affiliated with that building and we're gaining interest from people who are learning what we're trying to do. And that's, you know, bring, bring things together for the community, activities for them to do, activities for the younger folks even. We've got some of those already on the, on the calendar this weekend. There's going to be an event for, for the whole community, sort of like a Valentine's Day get-together or dance maybe. And that's one of our first, I guess, activities that we've got to have and LeAnn planned that along with Jennifer and I think, I'm hoping it's going to be a good thing. And we're not, we're not going to be able to do, you know, everything that we want to do, but we're trying our hardest to get these, these activities going and show people that, that the county commission and ourselves are really interested in that community. And we appreciate the, the time that you've spent on that. We actually had, you all have bidded out the repair for the roof. There was a company there today looking at it to get an estimate and I'm sure we'll have one to you and I don't know how many people will bid on it, but that's, I'm sure there's, you know, just looking at it, there's probably options that they may be able to, to give, whether it be replacement of the roof or just repair or what. And I think that's going to be a quick thing. Matter of fact, when I was there earlier today, we were getting our replacement doors put up at the end of the hallway.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you, Judy.
Our receipts will be found across the hallway here.
Yeah, they look nice.
Thank you to the commission.
Yes. Some other activities we've got going there other than the meals and of course, we've got, we've got the clothing pantry that people can come in and get clothes if need be. And we've got some other things, knickknacks and kitchen utensils and things like that that can really help somebody when they're really in need. And, and our plan is to keep that going at McCorkle. And I have seen just in the past month, past month or so, how important that is to a lot of people. And we appreciate those who have taken care of it up to now and those who will probably take care of it in the future because they're still involved and we're not ready to kick anybody out when it comes to helping and they do a really good job.
Take all the help you can.
Yes, exactly. And coming up on the nineteenth of February, we're having a community, well, rummage, I guess you'd call it. Folks are allowed to come in and set up, maybe, maybe we could call it a flea market or something like that. And at that time, we'll take donations, we'll, we'll have concessions and we're going to try to put all this effort right back into the community center through the commission. And I think it's a good thing, another thing that, that the ladies are with and I think that's going to be a good thing. Importantly, for tomorrow night, we are having a community open house. We call it an open house. We want folks from the community to come in and tell us what they would like to see because it's going to be their community center. We're just going to try to get the stuff done for you. From six to eight tomorrow, we'll have them in there before our regularly scheduled meeting. And I appreciate Sean mentioning that in the paper the last couple of weeks and that really helps us out.
Sean's good to have on your team.
Yes, he is. And he did well with it. We are planning that meeting and I, from what I understand, there's already a lot of interest in it, so hopefully we'll have some folks there tomorrow. And we'd like to invite the commission or whoever would like to attend if you can. And I think, I think the community is really excited about what you've done with appointing the board and wanting to get a community sooner there. And I don't, I have not heard any bad things about it. The folks that live right there in the community are always having good things to say and how much they appreciate it. We would like to have anybody we can come to the meeting tomorrow evening. There'll be refreshments and all that good stuff. That's, that's why I'm going. But I do, I want to commend the rest of the board, LeAnn and Ms. Sharp here this evening, Jennifer Borzetti and Nancy McCormick. They've really put their heads together and they've got stuff going down there. And in the future, we'll ask maybe for some funds and things like that to try to get things going. But one main concern that I have right now, well, two, I guess, is handicap accessibility. I'm not sure, I don't know about those things. I believe that most of, I believe the building is handicap accessible. There's, there's a need for a sidewalk, short sidewalk that would go along the front of the multipurpose room out from the main doors because when you're, when you're in the parking lot and you try to come up to the building, it's a slant. And I about, I about busted it the other day going down. I think it may be a good idea for safety purposes to get a sidewalk with maybe a couple sets of stairs going. It wouldn't be a lot of stairs, just a couple of steps going down to the parking lot. And in the future, of course, we're going to look at maybe redoing the parking lot and getting some more parking spaces and, and maybe try to get rid of gravel, maybe do some blacktop or something. But, but in the meantime, if.
They always thought we shouldn't have some kitchen for the bacon, slip down to the road and just build in there.
Yeah, that would, yeah, that would help right there. And they've also, the folks at the Little Mills for LCOC had mentioned, they back right up there in the kitchen and I guess, I don't know if they slip and slide trying to carry in and out, but something like that would be nice if the commission could give some recommendations or some consideration for how to get some funds on that. But I do appreciate your time.
We did discuss, last, I got in my report here, but we discussed it a little bit this past weekend with some of the legislators about what could we do and some of our needs and so they, they're looking, so we'll just let them know some issues.
The only other thing, we're in the process, Vice President, LeAnn Brown is going to set up a Facebook account to try to get some, you know, publicizing out there, to get this out there in the community as far as that goes. I think everybody's got a computer nowadays. That helps and. I think everybody's got a computer nowadays, that helps. And we've asked the commission perhaps to approve a website, the funds for a website, which we will maintain. There won't be any cost for the maintain of it, just to get it done.
Get it set up.
Yeah, so we appreciate everything you've done and anything you can do.
Yeah, we appreciate you guys, and we'll continue to work with everybody in the community trying to make it a better place, and just got to take it step by step, but we'll get there.
Appreciate it. I just, I just would like to thank you and LeAnn. I was able to spend several hours at McCorkle last week, I think it was last week.
Yep.
And was able to look at the building. The building was great. I know a lot of people in the area came together, cleaned up the building.
She was behind that.
Yeah, she told me about 10 times.
I didn't know.
I'm just kidding.
That was some of you who was talking about it, I believe.
You know, I can see that things are coming together, and I really hope that you and the crime watch can come together, move forward to make that a better community center for the people in that area. I know that one of the questions you had was internet access, and I shared the conversation we had with Reese about Southwestern's equipment, shared it with the commission president. I think you were able to talk to Dwight, I'm not sure why.
He's going to be here tomorrow to let us know what.
We're working on that, and when we met with the legislator last weekend, we were sure to let them know not only some of the, the building needs, but also the fact that you guys wanted exercise rooms and exercise equipment. There's other things happening, and your Facebook information, it is effective because I've already responded to it, so just keep that up so people know what's going on.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all. Anybody else from your group? Ms. Sharpe, you want to report if you've got your minute.
No, not on this, I have something to lay to them.
Okay.
Just asking for my phone. Sorry.
Thank you.
I only have one thing to add about Harts. I was able to go to Harts yesterday. I wanted to go on a day that the government day was in operation and stayed for a couple of hours and was able to talk to people as they came in to take advantage of government day. And some of the senior citizens that came in expressed how much easier it was for them to have access to the local government, and some didn't drive, and they were able to get their neighbors to bring them to Harts to pay their taxes and take care of business. They were very appreciative. That's one of the things one day I'd like to see, just get that to the court where.
Now, down the road, we need to look at, you know, when you're at, you know, one day of a month, the floor and the library, McCorkle Center might be a better place to look at. Also meet that internet work.
Next thing on the agenda is new business. I need a motion to prove the bills as the newest payment.
So moved.
Motion, I'll give it second, and before we vote, we will add two bills that were given to us a while ago, I signed them.
Be reversed and remunerated.
Okay. In all yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove exoneration orders are submitted by transcendence, sir.
So moved.
Second, in all yes, motion carries.
One question. In regards to the website for McCorkle, do I need to make a motion under old business under McCorkle?
To Ms. Sharpe, I need to get some, yeah, probably should.
I'll make the motion to take care of the finances related to the McCorkle website.
I'll second. Have Judy to contact somebody to upset it.
I think they've already been in touch with somebody, but.
Yeah, I can get this settled, okay. We can do that. Let Judy know so we can do a purchase order.
Okay, great.
He just wants her money.
Oh, yes, vote, motion carries, add that to the agenda.
I need a motion to dismiss the duties of Wayne Cooper as administrator of the estate of Rodney Del Cooper and appoint Roger L. Cooper as administrator, set bond at $1,000.
So moved.
Second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove a donation in the amount of $2,400 for all Lincoln County High students to travel to Europe.
And we've come up with that amount based on, that's a cost of one student, and we felt like they can just use this however, but that's how we ended up with that amount.
I could tell you this money's well spent because some of the places they're going, I just was able to go to the Louvre and some historical sites in Europe, and for them to be able to go and come back with that experience, I think will help them as human beings grow, and also when they come back to appreciate Lincoln County and what we have here, how special it is.
How many students are going to be in that? I heard somebody talking about it.
It was in that letter.
Yeah. The motion, second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to appoint Amos Everett Bryant as administrator of the estate of Billy Akins due to the death of Maggie Toppings, administrator, set bond at $1,000.
So moved.
Second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve a drawdown request number three in the amount of $269.46 for the sheriff's crime watching bill. Charles S. McCann, present and present, to sign this statement.
So moved.
Second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove appointment standing vacation of Lincoln County Commission by Donald C. Wood and Clerk as follows. Lena M. Browning as executor to the estate of Luther C. Browning. Benny Dean as executor of the estate of Ben Dean. Elmer Stowers as administrator of the estate of Robert Del Stowers. Leah Cooper as administrator to the estate of Jimmy Wayne Cooper. Rita Saul as executor to the estate of Maria Martha Thompson. Francis Carnes as executors to the estate of Coda O. Carnes Jr. Billy J. Robinson as administrator to the estate of Winford Akin. Alma Agnes Miller as executor to the estate of Cheryl Miller.
So moved.
Second, motion second, be all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the request in the amount of $7,707.95 for the Dugald BFFD for equipment for training community rooms from the training funds as requested by Nathan Vice Chief.
So moved.
Second, motion second, be in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to declare the copier to Lincoln 911 a surplus property and to transfer ownership to Hamlin BFFD.
So moved.
Second, motion second, be in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to declare two computer monitor stains, I need that stain to layer as Lincoln 911 surplus property to be sold at auction on February the 15th, 2001 at 1:00 p.m. Because there will be all kinds of things.
What is that?
It's going to be located at the 911.
So moved.
Second, in all yes, vote, motion carries.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that was not on the agenda that would like to speak at this time? Ms. Sharpe?
Yes, I'm going to put on my Alphac Lions Club face now.
Okay.
I, I was asked today to come over here and ask the commission about Jim Ryan at the Lions Club about the status of the $6,000 for the roof for the Lions Club building. He said he had not heard anything about it. And I had thought that a couple of.
Was the roof to Air Commission?
Yeah, the Air Commission, $6,000 for the Air Commission.
And I had thought a couple of meetings back, it was on the agenda here, and I thought.
It was, the contract is in, if, I don't think I received it, I may have received it the other day, but you didn't receive a bunch of, if not, it's still together in our office, but it may be in there. Now, once I received a contract, all he has to do is just give me some invoices or whatever and show me where he's paid it, and we can do a drawdown. You all paid it first.
Okay, so we, we have to pay for it first, and then you'll reimburse us?
They reimburse us, yeah.
Okay, and we can go ahead and do that, it's been approved.
Uh huh.
Like the $6,000?
Uh huh.
Okay, I'll tell them.
You tell them, you came over here and it was difficult, but you got it done.
I did, I thought I had to fight for everything we got, and I just, and y'all were just really tired when I left because you just gave up.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak at this time?
I'm just going to speak for Craig. Commission received a grant, Craig's last grant that he applied for with the records management for get more shelving in the county clerk's office, and we were approved for $3,000.
Twenty-six. It ultimately added two more rolling shelving units to be applied for the clerk's office. And on that note, also the Trailways Committee, the 22nd at 6:30, will have a public community meeting.
That's at Guy and Valley.
That's at Guy and Valley Middle at 6:30 in the cafeteria.
That should be.
Okay, anyone that's not willing to commission concerns?
If it's on the health summit, you get to.
I have, I know of five people that's gone out to the wellness center and has started their walking program. I've had several people that are so excited about the incentive issue that the commission will give them, they are committed to walking one mile for five days a week, five hours seven, and for, do that for six months, and then we have an incentive program that we can either go to El Hage or go to the Marriott or in the, in the six weeks. But just, there's been so many people that was excited about that. And then there were several employees that's getting excited about the commission has agreed or will set up something for them to quit smoking. And I have talked to Brian Christmas at Lincoln Primary Care, and he has counselors down there, and he's going to bring counselors up here that anybody would want to be counseled about quitting smoking.
So is that against 911 employees?
Yeah. Sure, you want to quit smoking?
Or walk.
Or walk.
We want to walk. Do both and you watch. Now, we want, you know, any employee that we have, we just want to get Craig to be healthier, which helps you.
I'm sure Ellen would be setting that, I guess I'd drink a lot more than I do.
Well, you, when you're, you know, you just walk around, wait for the sun to rain.
That's what I do, my son.
That would be the best.
Okay, next thing, commission concerns, have you got any committee reports?
Well, in our goals, one of the things that we have proposed, that we, you know, nicely the goals help you motivate yourself sometimes, it keeps me focused sometimes trying to look at things that we need to do or try to do. One of them is trying to keep our people of Lincoln County informed what's going on, just that kind of thing. And I'm sort of still in Rick's ideas, you know, how well he reports here and gives oral reports and his paper follow-up. Well, I'm going to try to do this with, as the things that I do as a commissioner, as president of commission, but, and we'll see how it goes, and, and I call it behind-the-scenes work, because a lot of the work that we do is things that never come here, it's trying to get things ready to do here. So let me just quickly run through this. I know we caught Rick for taking up time.
Yeah, I was thinking the same.
He can only have one page there. He only has one page.
All right, as, as a commissioner, one of the things that's responsible for president of commission is to meet with the extension service or have somebody else to represent you, and we've always asked the commission president to do that. But met with the extension service committee and basically approved the new budget after some discussion, and the new budget did require Lincoln County Commission to come up with $3,500 more dollars. And also discussed about the new Lincoln Boone agent, and that will be, I double-checked with April, that'll be next week, meeting in February the 8th, meeting in Boone County to make that selection. It'll be halftime Lincoln, halftime Boone, at least that's what the paper says. Attended the Tribe River Transit Board meeting, I'm one of the five board members on the board there. The board is appointed by the county commission and has helped us set up from the get-go with its county commissions. But what basically has happened now through time at Lincoln County, it started here, and we started basically appointing the members, and any county has the right to appoint members if they give donations of money to support it. And we make them aware of that, but none of them have really decided they want to drive down here and come to the board meetings. They have attended a time or two, but so at this time, we have five in all of our Lincoln County. The biggest thing that seemed to be going on out there other than, they're just beyond almost belief was their new building and, of course, a few little issues moving into the cell site, trying to manage it. But all four counties that support Tribe River have agreed to increase their funding from $10,000, what we pay annually now, to $40,000, so it's a $30,000 increase. And basically, what we hope to be able to do is expand some runs and do some additional work around to make the system work better. I can't sing that.
That's the guys that are working.
Of course, as you heard a while ago, we did have a crime watch meeting at McCorkle. We talked about some things that's going on, but what, what this meeting with crime watch, we had some guests in to talk about the meth labs that are going on, how to identify them and what to do and what not to do, and of course, Sheriff Bowden was there with some of his deputies also, and we had a, thanks to the crime watch people, had about 50 people or so show up, I forgot the number, but it was a little more than 50, I believe, wasn't it, guys? But that was la, last week. Serve on the Farmland Protection Board requires a county commissioner to be on that board, and it's one of those boards you have no vote in. You're, you're there as a communication piece, what's going on, what can we do, and those kind of, look actor, help look actor from the county commission, because we're the people who generate the taxes to help make this happen. So Dr. Lauren Smith is the person that usually leads all the discussions, tries to keep us focused. Rick's on that board, and sometimes we get away with it, he's pretty strict on, so. In Charleston, we got a chance to meet with Rami Barker, Special Assistant to Governor Tomlin, and basically talking about the Hatfield-McCoy Trail System and how we'd like for the governor's office to help us when needed and, and help us get this thing brought to, you know, through some decision here in Lincoln County where we can move forward and get some things done, and we think we're moving on that, and I'll talk a little more about that in just a minute. Attended the winter conference, the Association of Counties with Thomas Rami and Judy. Basically went over the, some legislative issues coming up, not an issue really for Lincoln County, but some counties are really having a hard time with annexation issues. I guess towns, whatever, are taking, trying to take in more and, which decreases funding for the counties, so it's becoming somewhat of an issue, but it doesn't affect us. The next two issues are in their legislative goal is more to us, and basically fighting unfunded mandates. Everybody comes up with these new ideas and, and it sounds good, but somebody always has to pay for them. Well, if the state doesn't want to pay for it, somebody figures out, well, just maybe push it down to the county or whatever, you know? But somewhere has to stop, so our position is we will be opposing any legislation that comes through up there that might look like a county would be punished by, by increasing taxes on our people. And the regional jail cost never will stop, sorry, it just keeps growing because when you think about it, the price of everything is a little bit more, and we pay wages of workers and things like that. So we're going to increase, but we've got to make sure it's a justified increase and try to help that keep, you know, I don't know exactly what the figure is in Lincoln County, but it's, we discussed it, it runs somewhere between $350,000 to $400,000 a year to pay our share of the regional jail. Also, we had the opportunity at this meeting to meet the persons, as I call it, the contact, the person that, if we got issues with the new Alpha Coal Company, they were, a lady there, Sarah Smith, to just to meet and greet and say, you know, if anything comes up, if we're making this transition, I'll be the face of the company that you need to call, talk to. And at this conference, it's hard to believe, but we had, from between 1:00 and 5:00, we had four different people come in and say, "I'm your friend and I'm running for governor." And we gave them 15 minutes or something to talk, but it was, I won't mention any names. Also, we had a chance to go down into the, where the offices are for House of Delegates, Commissioner Rami and Judy to meet with them and from the 15th and the 19th, and talk about the projects that they've helped us in the past, you know, thanking them for that, as well as, just so happened we had a letter to give for projects coming up this time, so we tried to let them know, here's some ideas of. So we tried to let them know, here's some ideas of what people are saying they want, from recreation, putting roofs on buildings or where it might be. But we gave them a good list of things and they assured us that they would work with us getting it done. I did discuss, and some of that we heard here just a minute ago, that with L C O C and Southwestern this week on telephone call about what can we do at McCorville to provide more meals at present? Just like he says, three days a week, basically up to ten meals. And we would like to have five days a week and twenty meals per day, so. And again, we'll talk about that a little bit again tomorrow with Mr. Cover, he's supposed to be here around eleven. Had a meeting this week with, last week, I'm sorry, with Kristy Limble. And basically just to present here a couple about round three, January meeting and approve this project. Time will tell, but this project is twenty-two customers on Laurel Fork of Lincoln County. Of course, there's other Lincoln County people going to be served in Cameo and all that through there. But the project that was added is the Laurel Fork and the commission has, basically all they asked us to do was to send a new letter committing fifty thousand dollars that we had written and committed to help get that water into that particular area. And when I left that meeting, everything was, basically said, this will be a one project, no, it won't be bid ordinance or anything like that, it'll be one project. So hopefully whenever they put the project coming into Lincoln County from Boone, they will make sure Laurel Fork is included. And Sean, I'll give you one. That's all I have, somebody just thanked me.
I do have a couple of things. One, the first thing is when President McCann showed me what he's going to do from this point on with the written analysis of what he's done over the last two weeks. I told him that I'll start doing the same thing because I think if, whether you agree with the outcome of the last election at the national level or if you don't, one loud message it sent was that people expect results. And that would be whether you're talking about the way you spend your time or the way you spend their money. And I think they would like to know what it is we do for them. And so I'm going to bring a copy for now, I want to make sure Sean gets a copy and read it to the public so that the public's aware of all the things that we do behind the scenes. First thing I'd like to just mention is, you know, when you get involved with public life, whether it be being a running for office, supporting candidates, there's always key people that you can think back to when you first got started that was the inspiration behind helping you to be focused and to know why it is you're doing what you do. And yesterday, someone that had really been the backbone of helping me and helped get me started and was an inspiration to me, Debbie Browning from Hearts passed away. And I don't know if you know Debbie or not, but Debbie was somebody that, she never was out in the public eye. But behind the scenes, she was the matriarch for her family, the matriarch for the community. If someone was sick, whether it be a child or an adult, she'd be at the hospital. She would sit there for days and help the families. Her husband and she has one son, David, I know that they're going to, it's going to be hard. They'll never be able to get over this loss, just like the community of Hearts and myself and others will never be able to get over the loss of Debbie. So I just would like for you to please keep her, her family, your prayers. Couple of things I was able to do over the last two weeks between the meetings was I spent time at the community centers, as we talked about earlier. I think it's important to have an arm, if you will, extended to the people that volunteer. Even the people that serve on the boards and the crime watch, we have to remember, these good people are volunteers. They don't do it because they make money from what they do, they do it because they want to see the areas improved. And they want to see that their neighbors have a better community and the kids that live in those areas have a brighter future. And I thank each of you for that. But I'm not going to go back over the things that we talked about, but there's good things happening in Hearts and Corrington. We had a Corridor G E D A meeting that was scheduled for yesterday, but there wasn't sufficient membership that was available for the meeting, so the director had to cancel the meeting for this month. We do have next Tuesday from six thirty to eight thirty, a speed reception that I'm going to attend. And that speed reception is from the Corridor G region, the members of the EDAs, the county commissioners and the delegates and senators. As I mentioned in the last meeting, we come together and we talk about what it is we want to see happen in these southern counties to grow the counties and move the counties forward. I'm working with Delegate Stowers, met with him while we were at the Capitol. As you remember the last meeting, Ranger Elementary School is here, we're working with them to rename a bridge there. There's a little conflict with the bridge because someone had already asked the bridge to be renamed. So we're looking at what options we have there to work with the kids so the kids can go through that process, go to the Capitol and be engaged in that civic process and learn about how government works. So hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have an answer and be able to tell you what the kids are going to be up to. Met with or spoken with people from the Hearts, West Hamlin, Duvall Fire Departments. They had some projects and equipment or other things they needed and we were able to, want to understand, take care of all their needs and their wishes. And that's another group, like the community center and crime watch, the volunteer firemen are to be commended because they don't receive pay, they sacrifice from their families. And it's really what makes this county, in my opinion, unique from so many others. We have so many people willing to sacrifice. I went to the Hatfield-McCoy Regional Office last week and met with Ferris Burton to talk about Hearts area and also just Lincoln County overall, the opportunities for development and development, I mean, in maybe now, we're down the road in helping Lincoln County grow and take advantage of all the economic development dollars that's possible for Lincoln County through recreation. The Lincoln E D A, we have been working on a Leadership Southern proposal and we had submitted a flexi grant to the agency. We asked for eighty-five hundred, we were able to get seven thousand dollars. And what the Leadership Southern will do, it will be a combination of young people who are potential leaders from Lincoln, Logan, Boone and Minga. They'll come together for about a seven-month period and they will work in areas of healthcare, education, natural resources and government affairs. They'll be able to sit down with elected officials, they'll work with the natural resource companies and go to the coal mines and look at what happens, go into hospitals, meet with doctors, look at the equipment that's used, so they can be hands-on with what's going on. And they'll be able to graduate and hopefully by being hands-on and understanding what it is people in their communities do, as a result of that, they'll be more engaged and more likely to be involved with civic government, whatever area they're interested in. One thing that you left off the list, but I'm sure you didn't mean to, was that we had attended the coal rally. And the coal rally was really, what I saw it as, a point of people that, not necessarily everyone there supported strip mining, but they were there to say, listen, West Virginia depends on coal mining and the EPA needs to give clear and concise boundaries of the permitting process. If you're going to get permits, tell us what we have to do so that we can go through that process. And in the end, if we don't meet all the specifications, that's fine, but tell us the clear, concise way to get there. At the conference that we attended last weekend, the County Commissions Association, I think that, and it was unfortunate that we didn't have all three commissioners there because I think at that event, not only do we learn about what's going on with other counties and we're able to network with county commissioners and learn to make sure that when we come here and do our business, that we do it to the best of our ability. But we also were able to sit down several times during the weekend with local delegates, senators, people running for governor, so that they see us, they know who we are and we speak for you. So they don't have to wonder where people in Lincoln County are, what you need, they know firsthand. And we don't care to ask on your behalf. One of the other things in the letter to the delegates and senators was money for crime watch. And I mean, we always make sure to include the areas that we know depend on the community participation grants. We sit here all year and we see on the agendas that we're drawing down so much money from the community participation grants for fire departments, crime watch, and we could name so many things. But if it wasn't for the work we did this week with the County Commission Association and delivering letters, those things wouldn't become a reality, they just don't happen. So it's important for us to be engaged with our elected officials. And the last thing I would just like to point out is, I would just like to say that I think Eric Assessor is doing a great job. And what I mean by that, we're going through the Board of Equalization and Review process as we speak. We had a meeting on Tuesday where people could come in and talk about real taxes and tell us if they think that the taxes are, there's a problem. We have another meeting tomorrow and we were there to listen to complaints. We didn't have any meet, anybody scheduled to come. We don't have anybody scheduled to come tomorrow either. I don't think we have anybody scheduled through the whole duration.
Not for the real part of the memo.
And then on the twenty-second, we have mineral taxes, we do have people that show up at that. But I believe that it speaks volumes for the Assessor's office and his staff that you go through the whole process of real taxes and no one shows up to say, there's a problem with my taxes. And I just would like to say a special thank you to his staff and to him, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else, anything?
I forgot to mention, sorry. I had talked to the commission about the efforts in the county to decrease delinquency, not delinquency, attendance, increase attendance and decrease truancy absenteeism in schools. And we've got a meeting Monday with Representative D H H R, county schools, probation's and the prosecuting attorney representative court system to sort of look at those kids who have missed ten, twelve or more days already in the school year to sort of figure out some interventions we can take. And I've been real happy with the commitment of the people the court has to sort of help with that. So hopefully we're going to be able to bring some to the commission there. Some ideas that we've come up to both encourage parents to get their kids to school.
Well, it's definitely one of those issues that I don't think any of us should ignore. It's a complicated thing and I seen a good article that Sean did on the drug court graduation. Showed it took a lot of people to get this young lady where she is, which took a self-commitment. But everybody needs support sometimes. And I was just pretty thrilled to see her make that and just write makeup. Makes you think, well, those people that depend on your dish more than anywhere else, they do have their, I think their heart in the right place. It's just such a complicated and overwhelming situation. But it doesn't mean we shouldn't try, and that's the same way as the kids who miss school and things like that. Before you know, you've lost them somewhere out there. They don't really go away, they just, they're out of sight until another time. Yeah, until another time.
One last thing, just so you're aware, this coming weekend, starting Sunday, we will be, I don't know, who all signed up? Judy, do you know?
I know the sheriff will be there, the assessor will be there, another representative from the county clerk's office will be there, you two commissioners, myself, I think that's all will be at the...
Will be at the Association of Counties. Last weekend was the County Commission Association where it was just county commissioners. Next weekend, all of the elected officials within the county is invited to attend a larger event. And it gives us another opportunity to speak to the delegations from the fifteenth, nineteenth of senators and all the people running for governor.
I tell you, one of the things that Thomas talked about, the coal and all that, but one of the things that we really had some good discussion on at the meeting last weekend was the Marcel, Marcel's Shell and guys from Marshall County and Brooklyn ended up in there. Of course, it's one of those things, over here you've got all these people becoming overnight millionaires who own the mineral and things like that and all kinds of jobs. But over here you've got some issues with some water and some of those kind of things. At least three counties up there are just overwhelmed with the number of jobs they got and how much their tax base has increased. They're just, it's unreal, listening to those guys, they're just, and of course, as I said, you know, people who had never had maybe any gas exploration before, they've owned a mineral, now it's reaching them and just overnight millionaire type people. So that's, if money makes you excited, that's it. Tomorrow, we're not really sports enthusiasts as much as, we just like to have a party, I think. They convinced me back about a week ago that we should tomorrow have a Super Bowl party at twelve o'clock tomorrow. We have lunch, so everybody's bringing a covered dish tomorrow, chilies and all, hot dogs and all that kind of stuff. So any of you all around tomorrow, come and have a Super Bowl party, it's around twelve tomorrow.
Do we have to play football?
Pardon?
Do we have to play football?
No check here.
As long as we're black and gold. No green, no green allowed.
I told you I had to wear a Marshall shirt, they said, no, they think I was for somebody else. Anyway, we'll stop on that. Take a motion to adjourn until February the seventeenth at ten, all seconds. We stand adjourned.